So. All right, great. Um, all right. So the purpose of today's study session, you know, is a couple of things. I mean, first, I thought we'd go over the expectations for the exam so that you can be best prepared for how to do really well on the exam. So we'll go over those. Those are posted on canvas, but I think it helps to sort of go over those expectations. And then, um, as of midnight last night, you should have been able to have access to the essay questions for the exam. Um, were you guys, were those available for you? Did anybody take a look at those? Did they have? Do you have access to those? And if you haven't checked it out yet, that's fine. I mean, I'll bring up the questions and we'll go over the questions together. Okay. Um, I didn't hear any complaints about people not being able to access it. So I'm assuming people were able to access it. And then after that, if you have any questions about specific course content that you'd like to go over, then I'll, you know, you can raise those questions and we can go over that, that course content. Okay. So that's kind of what's on the docket with how we're going to kind of organize this study session. So I'm going to go ahead and share the screen so we can take a look at Canvas. Okay. Alrighty, there we go. All right, click over to Canvas. Okay, so, um. I think as you're already aware, if you scroll down to. This is where the midterm exam is. Okay. So there's two sort of sections. One is the midterm exam information. And then the midterm exam questions, if you click on that. Then that's where your actual exam questions are. Okay. So you can download those questions. Um, and you know, and, and save them to your, your, your desktop or whatever, and we'll take a look at that in a moment. Uh, but let's take a look at the. The expectations for the midterm exam, and that's in the midterm exam information section. Okay. So, um, so the exam obviously covers the first half of the material. Okay. And so, uh, the questions are derived from, um, topic one to topic six. So all the way from the beginning of the semester, not including that introductory material, that first sort of on ramping week. But from the content from topic one, which is the introduction to the criminal justice system, uh, to the topic we just got done with, which was criminal defenses. And so, uh. Because this is a take home exam, uh, you know, if this was an in-class exam, I'd be telling you to like reread all the material and look at the learning outcomes and the key terms. Okay. Um, those, the learning outcomes and key term sheets are most useful for preparing for like the, the multiple choice questions for this, you know, for the. You know, the, the weekly quizzes that you have, but for the midterm exam, I mean, once you go get the questions, then you would just basically sort of go to the material. Um, that we've looked at throughout the course of the semester to help you answer the questions that you choose. Okay. And so, um, the exam, when you, and we'll take a look at the questions in a second, but there are six questions and you choose four of them. Okay. So you can choose whichever four you want, although you'll see that there are two options for the, for the, um, for the, the topic five and six. One looks at the, like where you act like a prosecutor and the other is where you act like a defense attorney. And so there you have to choose one of those questions, but we'll look at the questions and it'll be really clear that, you know, when it comes to six A and six B. Those questions, you can only choose one of those, but we'll take a look at that in a second. Okay. So the exam itself is open book, open notes. Okay. Um, and you have a substantial amount of time to work on the exam. So you got the exam questions today and the exam is not due until next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. At 11:59 PM, that's when everything was, is always due in the class. So you have some nice time to actually work on this exam and, and really, you know, um. Uh, really do, you know, a great job on it. It might, and because it is a take home exam. Um, you know, my expectations are pretty high because you know, you really can pull upon the lectures, the, the, the material in the textbook. And then any of the articles or videos that we've watched, um, you know, from topic one through topic six. Okay. Uh, and so, uh, let's take a look at sort of what the expectations are for the exam, and then we'll go ahead and take a look at the actual questions. And so, uh, the. Uh, as it says that there that the maximum length of the exam should be. Let me see if I can move that out of the way. There we go. Um, the map, maximal length of the exam should be eight double spaced pages or approximately two pages for each answer. Okay. And so if it's a little shorter than eight pages, that's okay. If it's a little longer than eight pages, that's okay. Don't worry about. But if it's, if your exam is like three pages, then you know that you're probably not going to do well on that, on the exam. And if it is way more than 10 pages, like if it's getting into the 12 plus pages, you're going to want to go back in and add it a little bit. Okay. Um, but the bottom line is, is that eight double spaced pages is really sort of like ballpark. Okay. Uh, in a second, when we take a look at the actual questions, the way that I evaluate you, the answers to these questions is like, do you answer all the prompts in the question? And are you bringing evidence from course materials to support the points that you're making? Okay. And so if you can do that in a, in a page, awesome. I think it would be difficult to do one answer in a page, right? If you're actually doing, you know, a well-developed answer that answers all the prompts and, you know, uses course material to do that. Uh, but again, if it's a great concise answer that demonstrates mastery of the material and answers all the prop, prompts, and you could do that in less than two pages for each answer, that's fine. Okay. So, and also if you write eight double spaced pages, but you're not answering the prompts and you're not demonstrating mastery of the material, like you're not going to get a good grade, right? So it's not really about the length of the exam. It's really about demonstrating mastery of the material. Okay. Um, and, and so, and then I have here that, you know, what the best exams will do. And so the best exams answer each of the prompts. You're going to see that when we take a look at the questions, like each question, sort of like our discussion posts. You know, they have specific prompts. Okay. They're not numbered in the questions, but you know, I'm answering, I'm asking specific questions within the question itself. And the best, uh, answers will answer each of those prompts. Okay. Uh, the other thing that I'm looking for is, um, that, uh, that you use course materials to help support your answers to the questions. And here I'm looking for not just the material from the lectures or not just the material from the, the textbook or not just the articles. I'm looking for a diversity of course material that you use, right? So a lot of times I'll have students who've listened to the lectures, which is great, but they only rely on the material and lectures to answer the questions. That's not going to be enough. Likewise, if you're not showing that you listen to the lectures and you make no reference to the lectures in your answers, that's not going to be good. If you're only making reference to the textbook. Okay. So make sure that you're using a diversity of, of the course materials. And for the articles that we've read for discussions or, um, you know, like the, the documentary you guys just watched on the 13th. Um, anything you can bring in from that supplementary reading to help support the points that you're making is fantastic. Okay. And it's really students who pull upon the articles and include that in their answers that you oftentimes differentiates the difference between like A students. And like other students, right? Because it's like actually showing that you're able to like sort of make these connections between all the materials. Now, as it says here, no. You don't need to use all the resources for each question, right? So in each question, you don't have to use textbook lecture and articles, but we're talking about the whole of the exam. The whole of the exam should include reference to, you know, all three of those things. Okay. Um, so if you're answering one of the questions and you're only using textbook and lecture, totally cool. If you're answering another question and you're using lectures and articles, totally cool. Okay. Um, again, it's sort of the, um, the full comprehensive exam that I'm looking at in terms of course materials. And then finally, um, you know, it should be clear and easy to follow and in manner, you know, make sure you do a good proofreading. I will take that into consideration when I'm grading it. And you really don't need to use materials outside of the course, right? So I mean, don't look on, I mean, like, you know, don't look on find your own articles and use those. I mean, if you do that a little bit, it's okay, but I mean, we really have enough to answer the questions just from the course materials. And then you'll want to note that, you know, you don't need a works cited page or anything, but you know, like you just use in-text citations. Uh, if you're using a material directly from like verbatim from the articles or the textbook, or I guess the lectures as well. You need to put those in quotations. Okay. And you need to put the page number. Um, and so don't, uh, just lift, not that you would, but don't just cut and paste stuff from our materials and like. Don't reference it, right? Cause that's plagiarism. Okay. And just in text up citations are okay. Okay. And so that's basically what my expectations are for the, um, for the exam. And in a second, we'll take a look at the, at the questions. Uh, before we take a look at the questions, do you have, um, any questions about the expectations? All right, cool. Hearing none. Let's go ahead and take a look at the, the questions themselves. And here, let me pull up if you, and if you want to download the, it, the questions, go for it. Otherwise, I mean, I think I can make these. I think these are big enough that you should be able to see it on your screen. Okay. And so, uh, let's see if I can. Make it a little bit bigger there. Move the screen over. Okay. All right. So as it says there. Um. Uh, you know, the first thing is when you download this and you start answering the questions, save it to your zip drive or your, your, your desktop. Or whatever you save things to, right? Um, I've had a lot of students who work on the exam and they forgot to save it and they lose their material. So the first thing you do when you download this document is save it as, you know, midterm exam, put your name, you know, whatever, just so you don't lose your material. So just word of the wise. Um, and then, uh, you can basically just answer the questions within the document itself. Okay. Uh, so if you're answering number one, there's the question, I want the question to be in the exam. Okay. And then just go down here and then you just start blah, 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 typing in your own words. Okay. Um, if you're not answering a question, just you can delete it or you can just skip it, right? So let's say you answer one and you're not going to answer two, don't worry about it. Just go on and answer three, or if you want to delete it, that's cool. Whatever works for you. But let's go ahead and take a look at the substance of the questions here. All right. So let me see if I can. Let back a little bit, maybe. All right. So for the first question. Um, it has to do with topic one. And so it says, first briefly describe, and let me make that a little bit smaller. So we're actually being able to see all the words. Here. Okay. So first briefly describe the four stages of the criminal justice process. Uh, you don't need to explain, uh, each step in the stage, but just summarize. Uh, the goals and purposes of each stage. Okay. So again, here you're going to want to be concise in the way that you are answering it. Next, I want you to evaluate the steps associated with each stage. Uh, as we know, crucial decisions are made within each step of the four stages of the process. Each state, for each of the stage, um, identify one step in that stage that you believe is most essential, is the most essential step for achieving the goal of that stage. And more broadly, the goals of the criminal justice system. So for example, there are four steps in the police stage. Okay. Of the four steps that are in the police stage, which do you think is most, the most important step for policing? Why is this step most essential? Make sure that you provide an argument for your choices. And note, make sure to identify a step for each of the four stages in the criminal justice process. Uh, so one for policing, one for prosecuting, one for the trial stage and one for the correction stage. Okay. Uh, and so that is the first question. And so that's the question. Uh, do you have any questions about the question? Um, I mean, there's no right or wrong answer in a way. I mean, obviously if you don't identify the four stages correctly, that would be wrong. If you identify a step in a stage that's not actually in that stage, that would be wrong. But the step that you select is the most important, there's no right or wrong answer there. But what makes it right, what, what makes it you, uh, an A answer or not an A answer is the evidence that you bring to support your claim that you think. Uh, for example, investigation is the most important step in the, um, you know, in the policing stage. Okay. So there's no right or wrong answer to which is most essential. Um, it's just like you make a strong case for why that is. Okay. Does that make sense? All right, cool. Uh, let's look at the second question. Um, so this has to do with the, um, the second topic two. Um, there are many steps in the formal criminal justice process, but very few of the criminals accused go through each step in that process. And we learned about that as known as, uh, that's often referred to as the criminal justice funnel. First, I want you to describe that concept. Okay. There was lecture material on that. It's also in the textbook as well. And then I want you to explain the role that the courtroom work group and the criminal justice wedding case play in the criminal justice funnel. In other words, you know, we know that, uh, the offenders don't go through all of the steps. And so why isn't that? What role does the courtroom work group play and, and like basically making it so that, that offenders don't go through all the steps? And also the tiered system with the wedding cake, what role does that play in the funneling aspect of the criminal justice system? And then the final prompt is overall, do you think the funnel is beneficial or detrimental to the administration of criminal justice in the United States? Explain your answer. And word of the wise, a lot of students will throw that prompt away, like these are the critical thinking prompts, right? Just highlighted right there. A lot of students look at that and they're like, eh, they just like give me a one word answer. If you want to get an, an A on the exam, don't do that, right? Actually, the, 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 the critical thinking prompts are really important because it allows me to assess your ability to synthesize the material, think critically about it. And really develop a good argument. Okay. Um, so whenever you see sort of a critical thinking prompt, like make sure you just don't blow it off. Okay. Cause it's super important that you provide a nice argument for that. Any questions for that question? Pretty straightforward. All right. Let's look at the next question. Okay, this one is, um, like basically defining and applying concepts. And so I've selected two of the criminal justice perspectives, the due process perspective and the non-interventionist perspective. I want you to, so you describe the key assumptions, values and goals of those two perspectives. Identify the strengths of each approach and the weaknesses of each approach. And then I want you to tell me in what way are these perspectives similar and different? So compare and contrast. Then, uh, there's the application piece. Uh, most people in the class are probably going to be able to do a pretty good job on defining the assumptions, values and goals of those two perspectives. Um, the next part is going to be a little bit trickier. So next I want you to relate these two perspectives to the themes explored in the documentary, the 13th. Which we just did our, our discussion on, and I'll be grading those in the next, if not today, tomorrow. So you'll get feedback on those before you take the task. Um, briefly describe how a non-interventionist might react to the themes presented in the documentary. And briefly describe how a due processes would react to the documentary. Make sure to, uh, to reference specific examples from the 13th when explaining how these perspectives would react to the documentary. Okay. Um, so again, you know, um, if, you know, you watched it, hopefully you watched the 13th, participated in the discussion. And then this gives you an, uh, like a way of really applying those concepts. And so, C, C students won't be able to apply those concepts. A students and B students will really be able to apply those concepts and illustrating that they really understand those concepts. Um, any questions about that question? All right, cool. Let's look at the next one. Uh, pretty straightforward. Uh, briefly describe the ways in which the following tools measure crime in the United States. Uniform crime report, the national crime victimization survey and self-report surveys. How do each tools measure the crime, measure crime? What are the strengths and weaknesses? And then the critical thinking prompt here, right? And yellow, uh, if you could only use one of these tools, which would you choose and why? Okay. Um, and so again, that's a, that's a pretty straightforward question that, um, that we talked about the NCVA, the national crime victimization survey and the uniform crime report in lecture. But we didn't talk about self-studies in the lecture. It's just in the textbook. Um, so again, make sure that if you have any questions about those self, uh, uh, those, the self-surveys. Um, you know, maybe you can raise them, uh, the self-report surveys, you know, uh, after we're done talking about the questions. Uh, and again, there's no, I mean. Uh, I am asking you to answer, pick one tool. We talked about in class how like it's best to use all the tools, right? That's going to give you the most complete, um, picture. So this is just sort of a hypothetical. If you could only choose one, which would you choose and why? So don't fall into the trap of saying, I can't choose one. I'm going to pick all three. Eh, it's not the question. Okay. So make sure that you actually select one, even though it's not best practice. That's why we have multiple tools. Okay. Any questions there? All right. And let's take a look at five. Um. Uh, again, pretty straightforward, compare and contrast the sociological and the rational choice theories of crime. For each perspective, address how these perspectives explain why people commit crime and how best to prevent and reduce crime. In what way are the perspectives similar? How are they different? And of the two, which do you think provides a better understanding of why people commit crime? Again, there's the critical thinking prompt. Make sure that you explain your answer. Okay. Pretty straightforward, but I'll tell you off the bat, um, students will make a mistake when it comes to, um, the sociological theory. Uh, we know that there are, uh, multiple theories in the sociological theory. Okay. So I'm not expecting you to identify each of those theories because there's like two branches and then each of the two branches, you know, you have the, you have the, um, uh, the social process theory, you know, uh, in the, the, the social disorganization. I'm not asking you to like, uh, identify all six of those theories in there, but you should indicate that there are these two branches, right? And how those two branches are different. Okay. If you just do a broad definition of sociological theory, that's not going to be enough, but I'm not expecting you to like, tell me everything you know about all six of the sub-theories within that, within that branch. Okay. So just, um, word of the wise. Uh, pretty straightforward. Any questions about that? All right. Final one. My favorite one is the application one. And let's see, uh, I know, uh, Bella, you did the application and Julia, you did the application. Did anyone else do that extra credit project on here? If you, uh, if you did the extra credit project, I just graded that and gave you feedback. So if you choose to do this question, make sure you look at that feedback before you do the question. Okay. Just because that was the whole purpose of that extra credit project. It was like, you got to like get feedback on this type of question before you actually took the exam. Um, so this is a cool one. Uh, and I hope you rise to the challenge. So there is a, as you see here, there's this case study. Um, and, uh, this question is where you get to act as, uh, either a prosecutor. Okay. So for the, for the answer, one of the questions, either six A or six B. Don't, you can't answer both six A and six B. You gotta make a choice. Okay. And like the extra credit project, um, that you can either ask, act as a prosecutor. And so that would be six A. Or you can act as a defense attorney and that would be six B. Okay. And so, um, that in order for a person to be found guilty of a crime, a prosecutor must prove beyond a reasonable doubt of the elements of the crime. There were four of them that we talked about in lecture and in your textbook, actus reus, mens rea, et cetera. First, identify and describe each element of the crime is covered in the textbook and lecture. And next, pretend you're a prosecutor and then review the hypothetical scenario below. And then keeping in mind the four elements of the crime, uh, prove to me beyond a reasonable doubt that your defendant is guilty of murder in the first degree. Prove actus reus, prove mens rea, uh, prove that actus reus, uh, caused, uh, harm and that the harm was the, uh, related to the thing that individual is getting charged with. Okay. Uh, or you can act like a defense attorney and you have to explain the difference between excuse and justification defenses. Again, a broad explanation is fine. You don't have to go in each excuse. You know, you have to say the three ones that are an excuse and three there are justification. You don't need to do that. Uh, and then you had to prevent, uh, you identify and briefly describe the main defenses in the, in these two categories. And then, uh, pretend you're a defense attorney, uh, your client's been charged with murder and you select one excuse defense. And one justification defense that you think would be most effective in defending your client from the charge of murder in the first degree. Um, so it allows you to apply those concepts. Uh, the case study is really, I think, cool. It's about a young seventeen or a, not young, a seventeen year old. Who has been caring for his dad who has multiple, MS, multiple sclerosis. And he's nearing sort of the end of his life and he's, um, really miserable. Uh, he's completely dependent on him, his son and his caregiver. Uh, to live and to thrive. Uh, and, and the dad is just sick of it. He doesn't want to live anymore. And so he keeps begging his, uh, son to kill him, um, to put him out of his misery. And, uh, the son refuses to do it, but he's really stressed out. He confides in a friend about how stressed out he is. He just got accepted to college. He's wants to leave, but he feels really guilty because he doesn't want to send his dad to a nursing home. Um, and then one day they find his dad dead in, um, in, in his bedroom and it looks like he was poisoned to death. Okay. And the son is charged with first degree intentional homicide. And so if you're a prosecutor, you have to prove that the guy is guilty. And if you're a defense attorney, you have to come up with some argument for, uh, why he should be excused, uh, from the, from the charge or why he was justified in, in, in action that he committed. Okay. Any questions about that? I mean, there's a lot more in the case study that you'll have to read, but it's just kind of a fun application, um, to do. And I hope that you, um, sort of answer it because it's a lot of fun, in my opinion. All right. So that's it. Um, let me stop sharing my screen now. Uh. Uh, who knows, like. How do I stop sharing it? It doesn't really matter. Doesn't matter. I'll just keep it up there. Uh, all right. So now's the time where we, um. You could ask questions about content, like any of the course material you'd like to go over, or do you have any questions about the questions? Uh. I'm here to help.
For the prosecution part of the last question, do you want us to define mens rea and actus reus and the differences for that one?
Yeah. And so in the, um, in the, uh, questions itself, are you guys still able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Are you seeing the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me scroll down. Uh. Oh. But anyways, I'll just answer the question. Uh, so yeah, for both, uh, if you're the prosecutor, you're going to want to sit, define what actus reus is, you're going to want to define what mens rea is, right? You're going to want to talk about the intersection between the actus reus and the action and the harm, whether there's a direct connection. And then you're also going to want to talk about the harm itself that, that comes from the, the act of the, the criminal action. Okay. So you are going to want to briefly define those and then, you know, prove them beyond each of those elements beyond the reasonable doubt. Uh, for, if you're the defense attorney, you know, broadly explain excuse defenses. If you wanted to give one of the examples, you could, but again, I'm sort of asking you to choose one excuse defense and one justification defense. So don't feel obligated to like explain each of the sub-defenses within excuse defenses and justification defenses. Bella, does that help?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Cool. Brandon, you've got any questions?
I know I'm, I'm good. Although I, actually I do have one. Uh. I can't remember if you said earlier, do you want this double spaced or single spaced?
Yeah, you're not going to get docked if it's single spaced. It says double spaced. So I prefer double spaced just because it's easy for all my eyes to grade.
Yeah, no, I see.
But not every student does it double spaced. So it, you're not going to lose points if it's not double spaced. So anyways, I prefer double spaced. But you will lose points if it's not proofread. And if it's like, you know, if it just like, I, if I can't follow what you're saying, I don't think that'll be a problem, but you know, do give it a good proofing. But if there's a couple of errors, not a big deal. There's errors and stuff I write. So that's, it's okay.
Hi, thank you.
Ty, you got anything? Any questions?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
So you said we have to include the question, right? Like.
Yeah, right. So like, when you download the document, um, just, you know, it'll have the questions on the Word document. And then you'll just save that to, you know, your hard drive or your desktop or your zip drive or whatever you use. And then just leave the question there, but then answer the question below the question. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, okay.
So don't answer it in the question. Right. And that's really confusing for me to grade. But for me, when I'm grading, it's sort of nice that I don't have to keep referring back to the question. You know what I mean? So it's just nice, A, for me to have the question there when I'm grading, but also it's good for you too, because you'll see the question there. And it'll, uh, remind you, oh, did I answer all the prompts? So, um, you're not going to lose points if you don't put the question there, but it's just best practice to put the question there. But don't answer the question in the question because that drives me insane.
Um, is it okay? Like if we just like copy and paste the question to a different document instead of using? Um, is it okay? Like, if we just like copy and paste the question to a different document instead of using?
That's totally fine. If you are used to using a different, um, word processing system, that's totally fine.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Catherine, is that right? Or Ca- Catherine?
Yep, that's correct.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Uh, Alex, any questions? Are you asking question? Cause I can't hear you if you are. Okay, and I don't know if there's anybody else on here or not. Those are the people that I can see on the screen. Is there anybody else who wants to answer a question? Or ask a question or answer? Haha. All right, are we good? Any, anything else? And I'm around as you start working on these, I, I can't answer like substance questions. Like I can't, like, if you're like, can you explain Actus Reyes to me? I mean, I'm not going to probably do that, but if you're like, hey, this is what I have for Actus Reyes, am I moving in the right direction? I can do that. So. Um, so I'll be around. Don't hesitate to reach out, email me, text me, whatever. Okay? All right, bye. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it and, uh, and good luck on your exam. I'm sure you're all going to be good. All right, bye bye. See. Oh, stop, sure.